The Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners. Due to the current COVID-19 state of emergency, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center remains closed to the public. Therefore, today's public policy meeting will be conducted remotely.
Hello, one and all. The sheriff is here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. So you're just in time to hear the rest of my comments. So members of the public may access and view the meeting on the government channel or online at mechncgov or at https://mecklenburgrevenue.com. That's mecklenburg dot R A V.
You don't say that.
And U R dot com.
He needs to stop and listen about music.
On YouTube. Follow us on Twitter or access and hear the meeting by calling 408-418-9388. Again, 408-418-9388 and enter the following access code. Then 1293378324. We will begin the meeting this afternoon by having each board member identify him or herself so that the speakers can reflect who is present and participating in the meeting. I will introduce myself and then call upon my colleagues to do the same as I call out their respective district. I will share with you right now that Commissioner Fuller will not be joining us today. He is out of town and unable to join us and Commissioner Pat Cuthbert will be joining us. I am George Dunlap. I am participating remotely. I represent the people of District 3 and I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Board. So this time I'll call on Commissioner Ella Scarborough. Commissioner Scarborough. All right, Commissioner from District 1.
Good afternoon. This is Elaine Powell, Mecklenburg County Commissioner for District 1, which is all of North Mecklenburg, and I also serve as Vice Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner from District 2.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Dreek. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. District 2, the most powerful district in the county.
All right, Commissioner from District 4.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. Welcome to today's meeting.
Commissioner from District 5.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Harden and I am represented by, I represent the people of District 5 and I am participating remotely.
Commissioner of District 6.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Rodriguez McDowell and I am participating from District 6.
Okay, Commissioner Ella Scarborough again. All right. For the record, six commissioners are present, which presents a quorum. At this time, I will also ask the following persons to introduce themselves. Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, Emily Quincy, Clerk to the Board.
Our Deputy Clerk.
Good afternoon. This is Christine Smith, Deputy Clerk.
Our County Manager.
Good afternoon, Dina DiOrio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
And our County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Okay, if you would join.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I was able to get on. I'm Pat Cuthbert, County Commissioner at Large. Apologize for being a couple of minutes late.
Okay, thank you, Pat. I thought you were going to be much later, but thank you for joining us. All right, this time we will do our pledge to the flag. If you would mute your mic and recite the pledge, please. "A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." So before we begin our meeting today, there is a few housekeeping rules that I'm required to share with you this time. Since we are still conducting remote meetings, there are certain housekeeping rules which every board member must adhere to so that the board minutes will accurately reflect what is taking place here today. If a commissioner wishes to leave the meeting, please ask for a point of personal privilege. State your privilege so that the minutes will capture the actions and attendance of each board member. When a commissioner returns, please announce your return when it is most convenient for you to do so. Since we are not physically present, when a matter is put on the floor for debate, I will call upon each commissioner and ask whether or not they have comments. Please wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking and please refrain from speaking over one another or interrupting another speaker. May I also suggest that each speaker ends his comments by saying, "This concludes my comments." If a commissioner does not have any comments, please state, "I have no comments" or "I do not wish to speak on this matter." Thank you for that. There are three items on our agenda today and it is to receive updates from Raise the Age and Juvenile Detention, Equity and Inclusion update, and our COVID-19 virus update. At this time, I will introduce our County Manager for our first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item on the agenda today is to get an update on the county's efforts, particularly our sheriff around Raise the Age and Juvenile Detention. And we will hear a presentation from Dr. Keith Cradle of Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Office. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Cradle or if Sheriff McFadden has an opening statement he'd like to make, I can turn it over to him at this time.
All right, a welcome sheriff, Dr. Cradle.
Yes, can you all hear me?
We can.
Thank everybody for this. It's been a long road for the Juvenile Detention Center, but I can say it is running magnificently. We are the model and I'm going to say that with love and respect. We are the model and the state knows that we are the model. We've had no real hiccups out there. We're just absolutely just trying to find our way, but as we go through this presentation, since the last time, we kind of added a little bit to it. And then I'll let Dr. Cradle speak about that, but we're excited about it. We're excited about the summer. We're excited about having it because it pushes us to the limit and we are glad to be pushed to that limit. But again, you know, we thank you all for supporting it. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for talking to us, but we got a lot of work ahead and I'm still going to ask the state for a lot because the state expects a lot from me. But I can tell you that I'm happy to have the Juvenile Detention Center in my city, my county.
So thank you, Sheriff, for that introduction. I'm into it. I was instructed to say next slide so we can move ahead. So we can go ahead to the next slide so we get started. So we're going to start off with a quick overview. So we think about when we started this process, December 1st, 2019, the State's Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act, that you all know is Raise the Age. It was instituted. So of course, you think about all the kids that had, the kids that were going to come into our side of our system. And so we made sure that our efforts were able and able to open our doors December 23rd of 2019. So we had already started just after the Raise the Age deadline and we made sure that before we opened our doors that we had what we needed to take in these kids, but also had the same youthful offenders that we had prior. So we were going to work with two different populations. Next slide, please. So in context, when we think about juvenile detention, this is Mecklenburg County's first step, number one, to keep families close. We wanted to make sure all of our children inside the systems, they connected as possible and they could have the very best programming and opportunities here in Mecklenburg County. Our sheriff is very big on these kids. He's high on these kids and he wants to make sure that they do not stray far from Mecklenburg County. And so by opening up this center, we were able to keep them here inside of our city and give them again, the best possible outcomes and inputs when it came to services as possible. When you think about those kids, juveniles of the age of 16, they are charged in Mecklenburg County. Our most neighboring county, Cabarrus County, had a few of our kids, so we took those kids back as well. And you can see that comment from the sheriff. We're optimistic about our partnership with DPS and juvenile justice. We want to explore and expand. So it's the point that we will do all we can in the best interest of Mecklenburg County families. And so again, that just speaks to the sheriff's determination, his integrity and all the things that we are going to do with this new mandate and with the dinner that we've opened up. Next slide, please. So objectives with this presentation, with the time that I have, we're going to go through our COVID-19 response. We're going to talk about facility staffing updates, internal response, the cost, ongoing challenges, service continuum needs and our external community response. Next slide, please. So like everyone else in the rest of the world, COVID-19 came and pretty much, you know, shut down a lot of everything that was happening. But of course, the detention center and, you know, and our juvenile detention center, we cannot shut down. The Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Office being in the central facility. And so we didn't have that liberty or luxury just to stop operations. And so we had to formulate a response, one, that was going to take in the health, welfare and safety of every child that was going to come inside these doors. And so we had to somewhat shut down the detention center to all outside visitors. Anyone that wasn't deemed non-essential wasn't allowed inside. And we did that to make sure, again, we took in the health and welfare of all of our kids and particularly our staff as well. And so the Sheriff's Office adopted a quick and comprehensive health out, health policy plan. So for all staff coming inside, you had to be screened. You get a wristband that shows that you were screened. And so in order to get inside the security area of the facility, you had to go through a COVID-19 template. And so again, that was all a response to making sure that we were doing all we could to make sure we stopped the spread of COVID-19. We are lucky and I hate saying this in public, but we didn't have any. And I don't want to say that to jinx us, so we want to continue to do that, but we had no positive cases inside of our detention facility for our kids. That is a tip of the hat to, one, our response to it, but also to our staff who not only came to work, but went back home and sheltered in place with the rest of the county. So they weren't veering and making, and making sure they were safe so they could come to work the next day. Visitation was and is still suspended at our center, but legal visitation continued. Utilizing platforms in which we can, we can do the same way we're doing this meeting now, that things are done digitally and they're also done through computer-based. And so we can have legal visitations inside, but also outside facility. However, there is no contact. All juveniles that come in admitted into the facility. So again, we are screening everyone that comes in. One of the things that we wanted to look at was not so much the kids that were already here, but if new kids were coming in, where were they coming from? Who were they exposed to? And we wanted to make sure we could limit that exposure and also cut back on any coronavirus symptoms. So all juveniles are screened prior to transportation and, and that's for illnesses, cough, fever, etc. So everything the community is doing, we're doing inside our facility. We also stepped those measures up as much as possible. Next slide, please. Continuing that response, so all juveniles with any symptoms will be isolated. Again, I talked about non-essential volunteers. So again, if you don't work for the Sheriff's Office at this time, we had to make sure we denied that access. We couldn't take a chance. And again, so when we, when we thought, we think about programming, we'll get later into that in the presentation, we had to make sure we still had programs for these kids. They still needed to do their schoolwork. They still needed to go to different programs, you know, to make sure that their days were filled out. So I'll talk about that later. Cleaning inside the facility. So we did a thorough cleansing of the facility. We added additional hand sanitizer dispensers all around the facility as well. The Sheriff's Office even has a bulk sanitizer station so for employees and staff, they can take home sanitizer so they continue to create those same hygiene methods back at their house. Education ongoing. So we talk about coronavirus. We talk about health and hygiene throughout the day with our kids and all of our youth and staff have been given masks, good copper mask. I don't know if the sheriff has this, it's off right now to put up, but we have those black copper masks. So the Sheriff, Sheriff's Office and our sheriff, we spared no expense. Again, we thought about the health, welfare and safety of these kids and we recognized that we had to step up and do above and beyond on what was needed to make sure that they were safe and that their parents and their community could recognize that we were taking good care of them while they're with us. Next slide, please. So facility staffing updates. So we are a 72-bed facility. That's what we contracted with the state here inside of a building. So 56 spots for males, 16 spots for females. Currently, at this time, the count, we have 23 juveniles. And so this is a little, I needed to update, this has happened today. So we're up to 23 juveniles and that includes five bound over juvenile. And we're also still working with our youthful offender population. So remember, the kids who were 16 and 17, they didn't leave out and they, and they still had to be housed here as well. And so we're still working with those kids along with the new juvenile that come in. Two separate populations, but the same programming tracks. 65 officers went through the JJO training and completed the state exam. They are now assigned to this facility. We are a full-service detention agency, so we pretty much do intakes and releases. So everything that needs to happen for these kids is happening right here. So prior, we might've had to go out to Cabarrus County for intakes. We no longer have to do that. Everything is taking place right here onsite with our staff inside the facility and we are working on the pre-accreditation. And so that process started in April. Of course, with COVID-19 shutdowns happened all around. And so that is one of those things that is still in process, but it's going to take a little bit more time just depending on what this new normal is going to be and when we can get the pre-accreditation and the auditors back out. Next slide, please. So I talked about this in our first update when we talked with you all about Mecklenburg County's Equity in Action Plan and how we align with that. We just wanted to bring that back up just to let you know again, that our programming efforts are in alignment with the county's Equity in Action Plan. And so we continue to look at this and we continue to make adjustments and make sure we're tweaking it to the best of our ability so that we are in align with the county and that everything that you all are doing, we're doing. And so that way, again, our kids, our staff and our community are benefiting from all of us being in alignment with what the county is saying needs to be done. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the revenue impact, talk about costs. So originally, when we talked about this, we knew that Mecklenburg County, being one of the bigger counties, that we had to increase the rate for housing juvenile. There was no way that we could do this at the, at the preferred rate that the state wanted. And so the Sheriff's Office negotiated a higher rate to bring in juveniles to make sure we could do this and at the best, at the best cost possible. So as you see, the current federal rate, $153.38. And so that's what we're operating off of. FY '20 revenue estimate for approximately seven months, as you can see, $415,000, potentially more if the Sheriff's Office accepts 15-year-olds. And so we have accepted 15-year-olds now and that started June 1st. So we are now taking 15-year-olds as well and that's why that number of kids here today is a little bit higher. And so the revenue for a 72-bed capacity, you get to capacity, should be approximately $4 million. Next slide, please. So talk about cost per day. So this includes direct and indirect costs, $296.48 per day. Direct Sheriff's Office costs, $237.58 per day. The FY '20, FY '20 will include adult and juvenile costs as transition occurred at the end of last year. So we're still factoring in that youthful offender, which are considered adults inside the system and our new juvenile population. So FY '20, 20 cost per day will be higher based on additional overtime because we had to train both late last year, early this year. And so those cost expenditures will be in that. Next slide, please. So our internal program response. So we talked about our CMS contract the last time we were with you all. And so at that time, we looked at that budget and so for FY '20, 20, the budget for CMS was about $550,000. We just recently received that FY '20, 20 contract. We have been in contact with CMS about those dollars, about that budget. And I know they've had contact and conversation with the County Manager's Office. And so they are in a process, I believe, of trying to take over that where the Sheriff's Office is no longer a part of that. So the FY '20, 20 CMS request was $658,000. FY '20, 21 budget has $0 appropriated to CMS in the Sheriff's Office budget because that should be going over to CMS. And we're currently working with CMS to find service level expectations. One of the things that, that we have to stay on top of and that we're worried about is that now that CMS takes over that contract, will they not provide us with the same service level that we had been doing in the past? And so when the Sheriff's Office was paying for this program, we could dictate what those terms of the agreement were and also how many staff that we needed and where those teachers were going to be appropriated. From what we understand, CMS taking over that contract, they are looking to cut back on some of that, try to, try to do some different kinds of programming. And those are the things that we don't want to happen. So we've been having conversations with them. We're also looking to you all to help back us up on that to make sure, again, that we don't shortchange these kids when it comes to their school and their service provision. We had a high bar for that. We want to maintain that. And so we hope that CMS will continue to do that based on the dollars that they're going to put forth and the staffing that they're going to select for this program. Next slide, please. So again, as I said before, as of June 1st, we are now accepting 15-year-olds. That does not affect our programming in any form or fashion as long as they're high school age and most of these, most of all these kids are of high school age, so they'll fit inside of our programming that we currently offer. We are ready to accept them. Like we had, we started seeing a few of them earlier last week. And so, you know, they are fitting right inside of our model. One of the other things that we wanted to do, and our sheriff is very high on community service and community engagement. And if Turning Point was going to be our school of contact, many, for a lot of the kids here, we wanted to go deeper into our community connections and help those kids transition for long-term success. So the Sheriff's Office officially adopted Turning Point Academy as our site. So the Sheriff's Office and our staff will send resources along with advocacy for Turning Point throughout the year. We adopted the streets around Turning Point as well through the city. And so we will also sponsor some cleanups and continue to do clothing drives, book drives, anything else that the school needs. Many of you may not know that Turning Point does not have a PTA. And so we will act as that de facto PTA for that school. Once again, helping those kids transition, but at the same time, going deeper inside the community and not just helping the school, but the community around them. We've added two additional staff and we will hire our first ever recreation and reentry coordinator very soon. That person should be coming on next week and they will help primarily with, one, doing internal recreation. So we have our, we have our rec center and our outdoor summer camp as well as reentry coordination. So as kids get ready to leave, this person will be tasked with making sure that all the community connections that they need, that they will do in touch with the parents, agencies and the communities so kids will have a warm transfer when they leave the facility. Next slide, please. You can take a look at our youth location. I think I've, I've shown this picture before, so you can see those pictures on the wall. Again, giving kids a positive mantra as they walk out, get their day started. So again, creating an environment that is safe, welcoming and warm. So again, creating an environment that is safe, welcoming and warm so that these kids know they're cared for and it doesn't look like the normal detention center. Next slide, please. We got new furniture. So updating, the painting is in process. And so this was a part of the juvenile justice money that was sent down. And so now, again, trying to create an environment in which these kids can not only recreate, but they will be housed. And we want to make it as friendly, family-friendly as possible. So you see rugs, more enlightening furniture. Again, a shorter ratio for officers, so less kids to each officer. Wet cells, and again, that natural light to give kids that outside perspective. So we want to again, make sure the environment is welcome. And again, gives them the best possible opportunities for rehabilitation. And so we want to do that consistently across the board and give these kids something forward to, you know, something to look forward to when they get ready to go. Next slide, please. We talked about changing out the uniforms the last time we talked as well. So at this point, we are at, we are at the place where you're phasing out all of the jumpsuits. We purchased recreational uniforms. So we go with the polos, caddies and sneakers. They now have sweatpants and sweat tops. And so they use those inside, inside the pod. But they also use that when they go outside as well. They also have shorts and T-shirts. So when they go outside for outdoor rec and indoor rec, they have that same look of shorts and T-shirts, sweatpants, sweat tops. And then for classes, again, the polos and the caddies. So we have eliminated all the jumpsuits and once again, creating an environment in which it is progressive. And if you look good, you feel good. We want these kids to have an opportunity to not feel as though they're in detention, but they are actually getting the help that they need, getting the services that they need. And they're doing it in a way where they look professional and they can feel like children. Next slide, please. So ongoing challenges. One of the things that we will always have to deal with is training of staff. Again, a wide range of education and experience for people that come to the sheriff's office. And so we have to make sure that as we train, we train on behavioral principles and practices for positive behavioral interventions and supports. And so those are things that aren't normally built into law enforcement-based training. But the sheriff's office is adding that stuff in. We are working on that training now for internal supports and enhancements. But again, people come to us and they, you know, and they want to work for the sheriff's office. And so as we do our background checks, we do our screenings, they're coming, you know, with their own preoccupations. And particularly, we feel that, you know, after COVID-19, a lot of people may have lost jobs. And so people might be coming to the sheriff's office to work, not necessarily with the right intentions. We want to be very mindful about our hiring practices and how we screen folk. Again, our sheriffs, our sheriff really looks at folk who are wanting to come here and work here and work for us, but you have to be in the right state of mind. He's looking for that, for folk that want to work with these kids. They, and not just work with them, but be invested in their lives long-term. Another ongoing challenge, the number of youth assigned to our facility changes frequently. So one of the things that we're looking at, we did youthful offender detention before, kids actually stayed longer. As we've seen in the last couple of months, as we've been doing this, kids in the juvenile justice system usually leave out a lot faster. So that's going to be a challenge for your kids completing programs. When they get ready to get sent home, what does that home environment look like? Has it been prepared for that kid or has the community been prepared for this kid? So one of the things that we're looking at when we think about length of stay, how much programming can we do on the front end? How effective will that be? But we won't know that in a matter of time. One of the things that I like to do and I always do is research and try to crunch these numbers down. For now, we don't have that kind of data because it's just too soon. But we do recognize that the timeframe that we're working with these kids will be a lot shorter. And so our staff has to pivot and get ready for shorter stays. But our programming have to fit that model for shorter stays. And so we can do more on the front end and prepare a community as they get ready on the back. Next slide, please. So service continuum, again, we need continued support from the county, community agencies, all works, all, all agencies are tasked with working with juvenile. Again, we recognize that we can't do this in a vacuum. And we don't want to do it in a siloed approach. We need the community. We need the county. We need everyone stepping in for these kids and working with us in tandem to make sure that when they leave, they have every service possible to be successful. And that's from, from big systems, whether that's the healthcare system, school system. You know, everyone's got to recognize that these kids belong to this community and their stays with us are going to be a lot shorter. So that means they'll be back out there and they're going to need support. Better data sharing across agencies. Again, that siloed approach is no longer going to work. And we've recognized that for years. And we've tried to be better partners with other folk. And we need folk to be better partners with us. And recognizing that these kids belong to everyone. And we want folk to call us, to invite themselves, to come see what we're doing when this shutdown is actually over. And that way, we can all continue to build bridges inside a service continuum that is comprehensive and provides all the opportunity that these kids need again, and their families, to be successful. And we, we need more time for data collection. Again, this hasn't been a long process for us. And when COVID-19 came, it radically changed how we did our operations. And so we had to pivot again from doing services that we normally would do to getting into a model in which we had to do what we could with what we had on, on hand, and particularly not allowing folk to come in. So if you give us another, I would say about six, six or so months to collect some better data, we'd have some more outcomes for you as it pertains to what we're seeing with the kids, how we're working with these kids. And again, some of our transition data that we'll be able to collect. Next slide, please. These are just for your own perusal. The sheriff, we had a couple of different articles in the news last year and early this year as we talked about Raise the Age, talked about what we were doing as a detention center. And so that was our external community response. We wanted to make sure the community understood what we were doing. And we also wanted people to know what Raise the Age was really all about. There's a lot of misinformation out there and I'm quite sure there still is some of that. But the sheriff's office and the sheriff has done a great job clearing up that confusion and giving people the right information so they know what we're doing and what to expect. Next slide, please. So in closing, again, this, this process holds great promise. We are moving from a correctional mindset, which we've been doing, that focuses on punishment, but one that supports and encourages change in kids and the staff that serve them. So we are very excited. We recognize that this, that these changes to do are not only through practices, but through public policy and the attitude driven in our greater community. So again, we are leaning on our community to help us out. And again, recognizing that these kids belong to all of us. And as they continue to transition in and out, that they will need all of us to make sure that they are as successful as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Cradle, thank you so much for your presentation. First thing I want to do is, Commissioner Scarborough has joined us. I want to give her an opportunity to introduce herself. Commissioner Scarborough.
I have some questions as he spoke in reference to how, I think he sort of answered this, but how can the county help? How can we help this out of the county commission? And so I want to know, we can't just barge in and come on. I want to know, one, what kind of training do we get? And two, how do we get involved?
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Scarborough, we're going to entertain your questioning in just a minute. But I wanted people to know that you had joined the meeting. Colleagues, before we get started with our questioning, I remind you that this is a time-certain meeting, meaning that we end it by three items on our agenda. Of course, I couldn't divide them up equally because some are longer presentations than the other. So for this period of questions, you'll have a total of up to five minutes. So what we'd like to do is do up to four minutes the first time and then a follow-up question. And if you don't use all your time the first time, you can have the remainder of that time on your second question. And since Commissioner Scarborough started with questions, we're going to give her an opportunity to ask her questions. Commissioner Scarborough.
Yes, thank you very much. And again, I just, I want to be sure that what we are doing with the children, the young people, I always, they're cautious by saying what, what we do with young, with the, young people. We have to make sure we don't address them out of their quote, the way they like to be addressed. And so I want to know, number one, how long is this program going on? Invest, I like to use the word investment, not programs. And secondly, how can we get involved?
So we started December 1st. And so we've been online since then, December 23rd. So when the law was passed, December 1st, we started on December 23rd. So we've been operational since then. And so your question about how you can help us, again, with you all as a, as a board, supporting our efforts, talking to other agencies, making sure that they're in line with what we're asking for, particularly with CMS. I brought that up in an earlier slide. We want to make sure that the school system recognizes that these kids are important, that they're valued and that they don't, they don't slash that budget in an effort to try to cut back on services and try to maintain that same service level provision. Also, when we do open our doors back up and things become relatively safe again, I firmly believe the sheriff wants you to barge on and come on down to visit him, visit us. So you can see firsthand what we're doing. And that way, you have a more informed about how you can utilize, you know, your voice and your advocacy for this detention center, for these kids and for the programs that we offer.
Where are you located?
We are at Specter Drive, so up 77.
Okay, I know where Specter Drive is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Pat Cottin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Sheriff and Dr. Cradle for a great presentation. It certainly, I, I just want to give my great feelings of such a great change in our youth facility. It was, it was pretty creep, it was pretty awful. And I remember seeing the kids in solitary confinement and so I, the accent on helping them and supporting them and being a part of the community is going to make a big difference. So I give credit to our sheriff and to his team. I do want to know specifically the age of the youngest child you will have. Is it 15 or is it younger?
It's 15. We're taking 15, 16 and 17-year-olds.
Okay, all right, all right. And yeah, I would, I would just like to also just say if there's anything that I know a lot of my colleagues are also very interested in this and anything that I can do, you know, please let me know. I'd be happy to come over or, or whatever. But I give you great credit for all that your, your leadership on this is certainly going to make a difference in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Okay, Commissioner District Five.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the presentation. It's fantastic. And I, I think people are, you're right. I think there's a lot of confusion around this program. So thank you for the information for the public. Can you talk about, I guess, one of the things I'm concerned about is that, you know, we know that COVID is a very isolating phenomenon. And young people need interactions. And then detention is a very isolating phenomena. And so how, what are we doing to make sure that the mental health of these kids is being taken care of as, as we go through this double isolating kind of situation? So thank you.
That's a great question. And so we've actually, we have two CCS workers on staff day and night and weekends to deal with the mental health issues. We also have staff that are already, that are already hired inside our programming department to deal with mental health as well. And so we've actually had to host, you know, a lot more individual and group counseling within the facility. But we've also increased our phone calls for the parents to the kids. So while they physically can't be present, we're making sure that they're on the phone, hearing those voices and also doing some video visits as well. So, you know, we utilize computer setups just like this for those kids to take a look and talk to their parents. And so we're trying to bridge that gap as much as possible. As you said, that, you know, that doubling down effect of the isolation. And so that, that means more time out inside the facility. And again, giving them free range to hit the library, to roam around, to interact with staff in a safe manner. Again, everyone has masks. So we're trying to make sure we create that is a somewhat normalized environment inside of a pandemic. And it's, it's working as best as it can, recognize that kids try to tell us, you know, through sometimes verbal and non-verbal cues, how they're doing. And so it's incumbent upon the staff to stay on top of that. But we recognize that a kid probably is having an episode that is, you know, they just can't handle it because of the fact that they're very different and they're used to being, you know, out and about or seeing people. Then we double down those efforts, again, making sure that, you know, parents, folk that they, that might have mentored them in the past. We try to get as many numbers as possible to stay in contact with those people, to get them on the phone, help walk them through that. And then our staff will accumulate that effort with their training and with their skill set.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions at this time, but I would like a follow-up question later. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am just really happy with this, with this direction that you guys are going. I think it's tremendous. I think challenging the status quo as you always do. Mr. Sheriff is exactly the right thing to do. I feel like all of the things that you talked about are so intentional. The positive interventions, being invested in their lives long-term. I mean, these are all things that I really think what you're focusing on is just so healthy. And I really appreciate how you, how you turn things towards the positive and, and, and not just in the, with juveniles, but with the jail as well. So I really want to thank you for your work. I was wondering, when you talked about the non-essential volunteers have no access due to COVID, what do the non-essential volunteers do?
Question. So non-essential volunteers, those would be, those have been some people that we have contracts with that provide maybe a life skills-based program, our GED teachers, our CMS teachers. So all those agencies shut down. We also had blocked that access for this limited time as everyone's working through their own process.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. And then it seems like you have 23, you have 23 there with a capacity for 72. Is that right?
We're at 23 juveniles and today, 15 youthful offenders. So that is, so that's the, that's the combined population of the kids that are here yet. But we still have more beds.
Okay, so will we be taking kids from other places? Or are we, you know, just have this capacity that we hope not to use?
So that's a question for.
Question for what?
The sheriff.
We are equipped for 70, excuse me, the sheriff is going to answer that. We are equipped for 72. That's what North Carolina, when we were debating this. So we are ready for 72. And that will be our max. We hope that we will reach that, but we will have the staff and the facility is ready for 72. So if we get to that, we'll be ready for it.
Okay. I, I don't want to belabor it, but I was just wondering if you have staff for 72, does, does that mean the people who are there get way more attention and away smaller groupings because of the capacity, you know, there's not, you're not at full capacity?
Well, the, the, the state has regulations on us, the ratio. So they create the ratio for us to have inside the facility. So we, we go under their guideline.
Oh, okay. So even if you have extra people, you don't necessarily engage them?
So I believe what also needs to be said is that different shifts. So it's not just, you know, those people there all day. That's broken into shifts.
Okay.
Right. So those shifts balance out for the people that are here, you know, night and day, depending on what, what shift that is.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Powell.
This is Commissioner Powell. Thank you. I heard the plea to the county commission to help with the education funding. And Sheriff McFadden invited me to, and Commissioner Dunlap invited me to the meeting that we had with CMS in the past. in the past year. I'm concerned about that as well, and so please keep us in the loop. We want to help. And on the recreation, can you tell me what kind of recreation activities they are allowed to do in the COVID, in the stay-at-home COVID problem?
Sure. So we have our own indoor rec center, and so, you know, we talk about ping-pongs, air hockey. We have video game stations, and so we sanitize that after each group of kids has gone out, so in and outside that recreational area. But also, we have an outdoor rec center as well, so the kids are actually getting outdoor airtime. So we do this in small groups again, so there is social distancing. Again, they have the mask, but we also make sure that we have what we need to sanitize after each year.
I love, recreation has become an important focus, and I think it will help. I mean, it's so hard to be isolated, and I think this recreation helps. And hopefully, the opportunities haven't decreased. I mean, do you think they've decreased COVID?
Initially, we had to be as safe as possible. We had to recognize, because again, this was moving very swiftly and as information was coming to us, again, the health and safety of the kids was paramount first and foremost. And then once we started to dial in on what our processes were, we were able to do it in a safe and secure manner. And so now we've actually set that stuff back up and even added, you know, the kids are doing a horticulture program now as well, so they're outside doing a community garden. And so, you know, we've really gotten back on track with what we can do. But we want to be very intentional about that, but again, taking in their safety and their health first and foremost, and not just rushing it for the sake of rushing it.
I really appreciate that you're being so safe and that recreation is still an important part of the program. And I just love the positive atmosphere, the energy, you know, the energy of being positive and the energy of hope. And if we can't have hope and positive energy going toward our youth, I just think it's the most important thing, and I really appreciate you and Sheriff and your work. So thank you. That concludes my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Leek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the most powerful sheriff in the country. I have read through the information, and the first thing I thought about when you gave your report, accountability, accountability, accountability. And that's what we ask for, and this is what you have given us, a plan in which you intend to, is presenting, and you're going to implement your plan. You know what your work is going to be. And one of the major things that I saw was a clean facility. That's number one, and a well-trained staff that knows what they have to do and is doing with our children. The children look wonderfully well in the new outfits that the sheriff decided that he would afford for those young people to wear. The other piece is that those who work with our children are to be commended. It takes a lot of energy, it takes a lot of time and a lot of concern. And I see that you have dedicated people working with you and working for you. And one of the other issues that I saw in here, you said you're going to work on behavioral principles, practices of positive behavior, intervention, and support. So any questions that we have, you have the answers for us in your presentation today. I want you to know, my visits previously, I worried about the welfare of the children, and especially the children that look like me, because that was the greater number of children that you have in your facility. And to hear you say accountability, but what's concerning me now is a concern about education and the cooperation of the school board in making it happen. And as I sit here concentrating on this presentation and what we're hearing across the country, I hope another incident does not take place that we have experienced before recently. So I'm hoping that because of what you're doing, sir, that the parents of our children will be pleased and understand what you're doing and cooperate and make sure that they are a part of the process of training and changing the lives of our children. Because they are becoming younger. When you said 15 years of age, that concerned me. When I saw in the news a 15-year-old had shot and killed someone recently within the confines of this community. So I'm saying to you, Mr. Sheriff, I feel good about accountability. I feel good about your knowing where you're going and how you're going to get there. And I hope and pray that the school board will understand its responsibility to help those young people as they have within the confines of school buildings also. So again, thank you and your staff for what you do and how you do it in being out in the public. Thank you for the barbershop that you set up and included the young people. Thank you for being in the community at all times when you needed to be in this community, sharing with us what you're doing. So again, come to us for your budget, and I pray that we give you a pay raise because of what you're doing. And you deserve it because you changed the focus of this program from what it was. I used to bring my interns over to the building. I provided socks that I begged with ministers' wives and games from the young Democrats to present to the jails. So I will refresh that again and start again with that process. I'm not a lazy county commissioner, and I ask that the rest of us come forth and help make this program what it can be and what it is. Accountability, accountability, accountability. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Jarrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Cradle, I definitely want to say thank you for this presentation and also want to turn my attention to our sheriff and say thank you to him for, not only his leadership, but his innovation when it comes to trying to make changes within our criminal justice system and the way we apply different measures to help rehabilitate and produce good citizens back into our community. And I think that innovation can't be overstated, and we see that in this presentation as well. And everywhere I go in the community, you know, out at the protests and other areas, people are always talking about our sheriff and how he is so committed and dedicated in spaces and places where most are not, whether he's giving out masks, food, and most people don't know everything that you're doing, but certainly appreciate the value that you bring to the community. And I want to turn to Dr. Cradle, because during your presentation, it was evident that your approach, you really recognize the, and your team recognizes the need for a comprehensive approach to achieve the positive outcomes that we need to produce good citizens. And I was curious to know, what support do you think is needed from the county as far as programming or other support by that comprehensive lever that's needed?
I think one of the bigger things that's going to be needed is going to be job support for a lot of these kids outside of the education. They're going to need to be able to, you know, make an income. So if they're going to be viable citizens inside this space, inside this community, you know, as we are releasing them from this facility, we need places that are going to accept them. They're going to look at what they've done as a mistake, that they're redeemable, and they're valuable long-term. And so we have to have agencies, we have to have businesses that are willing to go out on a limb and hire some of these kids, that they're not the same problematic children that are walking around aimlessly uptown. They need opportunity. Once they finish with school, and many of them will do that, whether that's traditional or non-traditional, they head over to CP, they're going to finish some level of education, but they have to be hireable. Something that our sheriff is big on, they do hiring fairs at Central as well. And so bringing people inside that are ready to go the extra mile and take a kid on, whether that's for mentorship, that is for employment. But again, we really need folk reaching in to take these kids on when they walk out the door.
So thank you for that visibility. I think that is really good information for us because we're constantly talking about workforce development and connecting people with jobs. It would be great if you could provide any information on, you know, potential career pathing. Is there, you know, specific areas where, you know, you think is low-hanging fruit from what you understand and what you're seeing? So any additional information that you're able to provide would be great for us, just as an FYI.
And that's good to know. We're putting together a job skills report and assessment. And so again, you know, given the shutdown, we're a little bit behind. But again, in a couple of months, we'll have that ready to go, and we can get some information out to you again, you know, what these kids are interested in, where they've been. And again, GIS mapping the county where not only they live, where they recreate, but where they're the most plausible solution to being hired. We talk about access for transportation.
That'd be fantastic. And the final point would be, since we're talking about a comprehensive approach, the data around family, any information we could have there as well to make sure that we're, you know, holistically looking at the entire family would be great as well. So that concludes my comments, and thank you again for what you're doing.
All right. Thank you. So let me just start by, first of all, thanking my vice chair, Elaine Powell. I don't know if you guys paid attention to the colors in those photos, but I sit on the Architect Review Committee, and one of the things that she was concerned about were the color palettes and making sure that there were colors that mentally did something for the residents there. And you could see the color, the furniture and everything, so I want to thank her for raising that issue. And I want to thank our sheriff as well. I think Mark might have mentioned it, somebody mentioned it, about the fact that we can actually see real rehabilitation as opposed to punishment. And I think that's the goal of this institution, and it's evident in all the work that we see the sheriff do. In fact, I was on a video conference earlier today during the debate. Shelby will tell you what I called and told her about that, but it was a really exciting event to have women who were incarcerated debating punishment in the criminal justice system. My only real concern is something that Elaine alluded to earlier and somebody else mentioned. We met with CMS last year relative to the education of the residents at the jail. And for those of you who were not a part of that, what we learned was that, number one, the state and both the county paid for these residents to go to school. Their school location changed from their primary school to the jail facilities. We expected the funding to follow them just like they would any other student in our district. What we were finding was that CMS was charging the sheriff additional monies for students who we were already paying for. So if we haven't resolved that, then maybe we need to have another meeting because we're not going to pay twice. It's just that simple. And we talked about that last year. We hoped that y'all would come to some resolution. But keep us informed in the event that we need to have another meeting because those students' education is already being paid for, and we want to make sure that they have access to that education as well. Second round, because time is eluding us. Commissioner Scarborough, do you have any follow-up questions?
No follow-up questions, sir. I just want us to do what we say we're going to do.
All right. Commissioner Cottum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No additional questions, just additional praise for our sheriff and his team and his leadership. Thank you. That concludes me.
All right. Commissioner Harden.
Thank you, Chairman. I do want to express, let me turn my camera on here. I too want to express appreciation for our sheriff, and I especially want to say just how much I really certainly admire his approach that he's taken with these young folks. And then this week, I just also want to say how much I appreciate you keeping commissioners in the loop about the policies and changes you've implemented this week in terms of, you know, discouraging racial, ethnic, or bias in profiling, and, you know, having the personnel early intervention system, the duty to intervene policy, and of course, not using tear gas. And so I just want to thank you because my district is very much in support of those policies that you've implemented, and I've heard terrific things from my constituents about that. And I just wanted to share that feedback with you, Sheriff. So thank you again for all that you're doing. That concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Jarrell's comment about families. And I think that was such an excellent comment, and I just wanted to follow up by asking, do we have programs in place already for the families as a whole, looking at as a holistic, you know, because you mentioned that they would have shorter stays, and so that just seems like a really important piece to this whole pie. So can you answer that for me?
Sure. It comes to the parents. Again, we have a comprehensive model, include all parents. And so not only do we have release packets for the children that go to the parents, we have involved the parents inside, you know, the facility as allowable, take part in not only a program that we're having, but we let them know what they've done with that programming. Additionally, when it comes down to parenting, when it comes to the juvenile justice model, they have to be involved. And so very different from youthful offenders, where youthful offenders were considered adults, the parents didn't necessarily have to be involved. With JJ, they have to be involved. And so we're going to see a lot more of those parents, which creates more phone calls for us, which we're very glad about. Before, you know, it took, you know, an arm and a leg to get some of these parents on the phone, to commit to being inside some of these children's lives. But inside this juvenile justice system, they have to be involved. And so we're going to continue to see those parents, and we have programming built around that when it comes to visitation, when it comes to technology. And so we're making sure that we're bridging that gap for the parents, our facility, and again, working with the community.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments, except the sheriff knows how to find me. He knows how to quickly, and I really appreciate you and Dr. Cradle. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Leek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say our children are redeemable. And I want to say that I did mention in my comments about the involvement of parents because they certainly are a part of the process, so I'm asking you and thanking you. The thing that worries me still about the money that follows children where they go and not at the jail. So if our chairperson and vice chair is meeting with the Board of Education, we like to know what's happening and what the response is when the next meeting takes place. So we can be involved. Accountability, accountability.
All right. Commissioner Jarrell.
No additional questions, Mr. Chair. Just thank you for the presentation.
All right. And again, I'd like to thank the sheriff for accepting our invitation to come and present to us and keeping us informed of all the things that's going on in and around the sheriff's office. It is so much appreciated. The community appreciates it as well, and you know that we're serious. For those, and I said this for those who didn't know, this was a meeting that took place last year as we tried to intervene in a discrepancy that was happening between the sheriff department and the sheriff department and CMS. And so we were invited to be a part of that. So we're still looking for a resolution, and if necessary, we need to get back together again, please let us know. Thank you both again, Dr. Cradle and Sheriff for the presentation today.
Yeah, I thank you all. Yeah, I thank you all. Um, and I, I thank you all for my, for the support. When I talked to other sheriffs, I said, I don't have no problem with my commissioners. I'm just keeping them informed. But, um, you have to know that I love this job and I don't, I don't say that easily. Uh, and I definitely love the kids. And you know, when we're talking about outdoor sports, um, hopefully that I can play badminton with my, my youth. Cause me and a young man has an undefeated badminton championship. So we, we're spanking everybody. I don't know if he's still here, but we, we are dedicated to our kids. And it is different when we have the, the JJ kids, the juvenile justice kids from the youthful offenders. We got to really know the parents of our youthful offenders. And we had, you know, first name basis and, and they call us. So we are struggling with that because we're trying to build those meaningful relationships. But, um, we also invite you all to come out. You know, you all can come out anytime. You know, you don't have to say, well, I just want to, you can show up and, and Major Youngblood and everybody will take care of you. So if you want to surprise us, the floors are still will be clean. Trust me. It'll be clean. The staff will still be doing, um, what they need to do because that's what I want them to do. Uh, cause I'll show up anytime, day or night, and they, they know that I'll come in the middle of the night just to check walking down the halls. But I, I do want to thank Dr. Cradle and, um, Major Youngblood and definitely Rachel Van Heart for, if you all know what we went through to get to this point, you know, it was absolutely unbelievable. But when we signed that paper, I felt good about it. And then when, um, Major Youngblood came to me, uh, a few days ago and say, let's talk about the 15-year-old, you have to understand, we're looking at taking care of our kids first. And so to have our kids in the same county, that we can take care of them and we know what they're going to get. And you know, with my staff out there, I have zero problem with them. We know what we're getting. So we want to take care of our kids first. But I do want to thank you all. And if we can get by this, um, CS, CMS budget and the money, you know, we won't bug you. You just can come and see what we're doing. But, uh, we're progressive, we're professional and very passionate. And so that's, that's the new MCSO way. And if anybody want to stand in our way, they may just stand to the side.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. It's time we'll turn to our county manager for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on our agenda is an update on our Equity and Inclusion Initiative. And with that, I will turn, uh, the microphone over to Penn Zapania, who is the Director of our Office of Equity and Inclusion.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, thank you, County Manager. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Dunlap and Commissioners for the opportunity to present to you today. I am here to provide an update on the county's equity and inclusion efforts. The last time I was here, I don't know if you remember, back in spring of 2019, prior to the county adopting its Equity Action Plan. I also want to say today that it's a very difficult time to present to you today. With the impact of communities of color, the COVID-19, and now the George Floyd death and the protests for injustice, it really has taken all of us and how we pursue our equity work. With two weeks of protests in US and globally, it has raised the voices on how the system marginalizes people of color, the systematic racism in the, in, in our institutions and structures. The Equity Action Plan is the start and a path forward, at the same time recognizing the need to increase our plan on areas where we could make a greater impact. Next slide. What I plan on covering today is, uh, provide you a little bit of background on Equity and Inclusion Effort, which we, um, I spent some time last time. I wanted to, uh, spend some time at this meeting to kind of, um, ground us in where we have been. And talk a little bit more about, um, our Equity Action Plan development and most of my time highlighting Equity Action Plan and our progress. And then, um, discuss a little bit on, in terms of our continued equity work in a virtual space. Next slide. As you all know this, and this is your part of your commitment, um, back in 2016, the county manager made a commitment that we, as an organization, will look at our operations, policies and practices from equity lens. And that is, uh, in, in addition to that, creating my office and my position. And you, last year, have made a commitment that we, as your part of your number one, um, priority is to reduce racial disparity. So it is a priority at all levels of our organization. Next slide. And in April of 2019, the county adopted its equity vision. That is that we envision all people in Mecklenburg County will have an equitable opportunity to thrive in the workplace and the community. That is ensuring that all people, the key words here, the key words are all people and opportunity to thrive. And we want to ensure that in everything that we do. Next slide. In light of recent events, um, I wanted to make sure that we are grounded in our thinking and how we refer to these terms and concepts. Racism is often thought as an individual act of bias. To fully address the impact of racism, in its, it is important to address institutional and structural basis biases. I wanted us to think about in these three different levels. Individual racism, we're talking about the prejudgment bias and discrimination by individuals based on race. Institutional racism, it's about the policies, practices and procedure that work better for white people than people of color. Often it is unintentional and inadvertently. Structural racism, this is the history and current reality of institutional racism across all institutions. This combines to create a system that negatively impacts community, communities of color. Let's imagine what it looks like in our day, everyday lives. So individual racism is the room we are sitting in. It's our immediate context. Institutional racism is the building this room is in. It is the policies and practices that dictate how we live our lives. Structural racism is the skyline of the buildings around us, all which interact to dictate our outcome. Next slide. This is the path to, to dismantle historical ongoing systems of inequity. We must look beyond equality, which is the notion of same opportunity, to equality, the notion of fairness and outcomes for all. If you've seen this slide before and, and at the last time I presented, and you all are pretty much, um, are speaking the same language here as well. Next slide. Our work centers around the framework of Race Forward, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Here. Gears model, it's about normalizing, which is a share analysis and definition, creating a sense of urgency and prioritization of our work. Organizing, that is about building infrastructure so that we could create structure to advance this work. Your partnerships, as we cannot do this work alone. Let me stress this. It is about internal and external. The partnership is also a key to our, our process. Operationalizing, that is about using racial equity tool for our decision-making process in order to develop strategies and drive results. And in that, we are using the six-step process in using the racial equity link, equity tools to make decisions. Next slide. Why are we leading with race? So race is the key in what we are, uh, working on in terms of, um, advancing racial equity. We lead with race because racial inequity are deep and pervasive. And you all know this. I'm speaking to the choir here likely. In me, in many instances, the racial inequities that we see in communities today are the same. And we know this even just a recent event. It is, it's, if not, it's even worse than they were doing the, the civil rights movement. Racial, racial anxiety is on the rise. Race is often an elephant in the room. Many times people will avoid, we want to avoid talking about race. As it turns out, if there is something we cannot talk about, it is going to be impossible to come up with solutions. Learning and institutional and structural approach can, can be used with other areas, areas of marginalization. As we talk about how racial inequities are manifested through institutions and structure, we can also think about how gender, age, disability, sexual orientation, et cetera, um, of, of marginalization are also manifested through institution and structure. Finally, specific, specificity, I'm sorry, matters. The strategies and solution that we need to address racial inequity are the same as, as they are needed for gender, are not the same as they are needed for gender, sexual orientation, et cetera. We have to have the complexity of understanding and analysis to be able to come up with specific strategies. Next slide. Work, working within our institutions to ensure that race no longer plays a predictive role in determining how well we do in American society. We hear a lot about racial inequities, but I also think that it's important that we think about it to, about what we aspire to do, which is racial equity, where we would eliminate racial inequity, increase successes for everyone. Our goal isn't just to close the gaps, since we don't want to just make this equally bad for everyone. We have to be able to target strategies to focus improvement for those that are worse off and move beyond services and focus on changing policies, institutions and structure. Oftentimes when people are thinking on closing the gaps, they think in terms of treating symptoms, not causes. As a result, end up talking about programs and services. While program services are critically important, we would never be sufficient to achieve racial equity unless we address policy, institution and structure. Next slide. This particular slide, I spent, uh, at the last time, talking a little bit more in depth. I won't spend that much on this today. But back in 20, in FY18, we launched our work. The first thing that we did was, uh, conducted county-wide equity assessment, which created a baseline for us. At the same time, we trained over 250 county leadership, middle managers all the way to our executive team and the Equity Core Team as well to champion the work. And we spent about nine months with the Equity Core Team to develop the Equity Action Plan, which is completed in FY19. Next slide. The last time I was here, you asked about who are the members of the Equity Core Team. So I decided to include their names. Um, and if we were in person, had a meeting in person, I would have introduced all of them to you. But I wanted to just, uh, point out that we have a representative from every single department. Some are newer additions and others, but these individuals are part of my team, part of the team that's helping to advocate and, and advocate, advocate for the work that needs to go on in the departments. Next slide. In terms of development of Equity Action Plan, how did we go about doing this? Couple ways. Of course, using the equity assessment that was conducted, we also, um, worked with the Equity Core Team to develop five pilot projects. These five pilot projects, um, in, were integrated into the Equity Action Plan. And pretty much, I would say about 90% of the plan came from the, the pilot projects. And we also benchmark against other jurisdictions, cities such as Seattle, Austin, Asheville, Portland, Dane County, uh, King County and, and so on. These are the ones that are leading their way in advancing racial equity. We spent quite a bit of time, we're working with our cabinet members to ensure that they're on board, that they, um, help us to envision what is it that we want to, to do with equity and Equity Action Plan. All that collectively, collectively, um, became the plan. Next slide. So I wanted just to show you this video. I think it will speak about what I just said as well as, uh, what will be included in the next, uh, of my couple of slots. So with that, if you can show this video, please.
I was shocked. I was hurt. Um, felt a lot of emotions. Um, you know, we watching on TV, other places. But when it hits home, it really hits to the heart. It was a very mixed emotion and very challenging, very difficult experience to observe.
So in 2016, after the Keith Lamont Scott shooting, there was a lot of conversations around equity within the community. And what did that mean? And the commitment that I made to the Board of County Commissioners at that time is that I really felt it was important that we look internally first, making sure that we have a full grasp of what we're doing internally and that the services that we, uh, provide are free of any kind of inherent bias so that we can say, um, absolutely, um, that we are, uh, providing our services without any kind of inequity.
Basically, racial equity is about closing the gaps so that we could improve outcomes for everyone, including our, all residents of our community, our workforce, or every employee in the workplace.
Equity, um, really means meeting people where they are. And it's not about delivering the services in the same way every single time. It's about delivering services in the way that people can really receive them.
It means, um, tearing down systems that prevent people from getting jobs or, uh, getting contracts or, uh, winning bids because of some implicit bias that might exist with the person who's making that decision.
At the core of racial equity is really justice and ensuring that the color of someone's skin and where they come from is not going to predict their outcomes in life.
And not everybody starts at the same starting line. So sometimes you have to, uh, do something to get people a little bit further ahead because they're not always, you know, starting from the same point.
A lot of times government has to take on the role of being a leader where other private industry, um, won't do that.
We provide services to people and we provide services to the most vulnerable people in our community in some cases. And so, um, these are folks that need a tremendous amount of support. So we want to make sure, um, that we are eliminating any barriers that may be, um, in our processes that inhibit people from being able to take advantage of our services.
I think when it comes to racial equity, sometimes people have a scarcity mindset, which is to say that if and as others improve, that I might lose. Um, and I think that's a fear-based mindset that I personally don't agree with. I think if one has the abundance mindset, the thought really is, and frankly, research shows that as some do better, as others do better, we all improve. Um, and so I think that's a misconception that there have to be winners and losers.
I see our role as the Equity Core Team as kind of twofold. One is the educational piece of letting people know what is racial equity? How do you use a right racial equity toolkit? What does that even look like and what does that mean? Um, and then the second piece, I think really normalizing conversations. These issues aren't easy issues to talk about and no one, you know, anyone who tells you that is lying. They're really challenging. Uh, but I think the important part is that we do have these conversations and we realize how we can create a safe space.
You know, we all sort of believe that, you know, we don't, we don't come with biases to the table. But when you start to go through the training and start to see how, um, inherent they can be in what we do, it is uncomfortable. Um, and it does take a lot to be able to confront that, um, and to be able to think differently.
Matters of race hit really close to home for me. Um, oftentimes people look at me and try and figure out, you know, where am I from? What's my background? Um, I grew up in a household, uh, with a white mom and black dad and really trying to struggle and figure out what that meant for me and my identity. And when we had conversations around race, where did I sit? What was my, um, perspective supposed to be on those things? And, uh, so throughout, you know, elementary, middle school, high school, even college, really struggling with that identity piece. And I think it's such an important conversation that we need to have.
It's awkward, but you, you have enough of them and you kind of get past the awkwardness. And let's just figure out what are some real solutions or how can we talk with one another about difficult conversations?
People care about this. Our employees really care about this. So I think that they're going to benefit, um, from having those kinds of conversations. But I think everybody's going to be much better off for it.
I think we're in a unique position to be able to make a difference and say that people who are promoted are promoted because of their, uh, job skills or because of, um, their work ethic or some other reason other than because they are black or white, or they're male or female, or they're gay or straight.
If we do the work and the training for this, Mecklenburg County would just be a better place for us all. And that's, that's our, that's our desire for all of us to thrive.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dan. Um, so as I started at the beginning, this plan is a start, but a critical start. And, and I wonder if we emphasize this, we are focused internally, looking at a policy, practices and processes. and processes in terms of our systems and structure. We do have a couple of strategies and actions that focus on external things in areas such as inclusive engagement partnerships. So next slide. You have received this in your handout. So you received the PowerPoint as well as this one-page document and then the actual plan itself. If you wanted to refer the, this handout, you'd probably see a little bit better. The plan identifies six goals, 11 strategies, and 61 action items. Each goal, strategy, action item, item has accountabilities, community indicators, organization performance measures, and timeline. With a vision that all people in Mecklenburg County have an equitable opportunity to thrive, we hope to accomplish the following: that our hiring practices are equitable and provide better outcome for all employees. All employees will have opportunity to advance, especially people of color who have not had those opportunities. All employees will given the skills tools to advance racial equity. Our communities of color are engaged in our process. Race isn't a determinant of health outcome, especially those who serve at our CRCs. Small businesses, business of color, and non-private organizations are sharing in economic prosperity. All residents live in a just and equitable community where race doesn't project outcomes in the criminal justice system. And lastly, we have an infrastructure to hold ourselves accountable and to sustain equity work as we recognize it's a journey, not a sprint. So next slide. I am going to spend some time now talking about just highlighting Equity Action Plan. You have, as I indicated, you have that in your handout. As I also said, there's 61 action items. For FY20 and FY21 and FY22, I am bringing one or two items in each of the goals. So I would also say that the items highlighted in blue, that you see in blue, are the items, the action items that align with our corporate business plan. So I will spend a little bit more time on those during the next few slides. At the same time, I want to draw your attention to other action items that we're still in progress. And in that, also want to recognize that for the last four or five months, we have been pretty much on hold on a lot of our work. So once we're back to the new normal, we'll start looking at where we are in terms of our timeline and what needs to be adjusted. So with that, the first one I want to draw to your attention is the formalized community engagement in the BOC budgetary process to ensure traditional margin right groups are included in the process. I believe that one is still in the works. There's some more work to be done in that particular action item. Provide feedback using equity lens on our MWSBE program evaluation and disparity study. That work is still going on, and it aligns with the Economic Development, Office of Economic Development's work. The next item, develop and launch an online implicit bias training specific to the criminal justice system. That is accountability for CJS. They're working on that, and I believe they're pretty close in launching that training, online training for their across the criminal justice system. Next slide. The more detail, I'm going to provide a little bit more detail about our one-day advancing racial equity training for all employees. We launched this back in August. We're dividing into three different groups. A group one, all these departments, you see, mostly our internal departments. We completed that work. We roll out group two, which mainly our Health and Human Services Department and Medic and Elections. And we started offering the training for our employees for two months. And now, since March, beginning of March, those sessions have been on hold. Group two and three will be restructured once we're safely back to a new normal, and we'll need to determine how we will, will approach the training. I also want to point out that we have hired seven expert facilitators. These are MWSBE small businesses that are working with us and are internal facilitators to facilitate the training. I am proud to say that between August and February, we have trained over 2,000 employees. That is really significant, and I may say that is a significant now, in fact, that our employees are showing up and want to be engaged. A lot of positive feedback, and we know we are not even halfway to go in the remaining of our employees to be trained. Next slide. Back in February of 2020, about four months ago, we formed and launched a formation of the Department Equity Action Teams, which consists over 165 employees. These individuals are going to be the champions and advocate for racial equity work in the department. They will participate in the deep working sessions with me to develop their department Equity Action Plan. Let me emphasize this. This is where you will actually see much more significant work when the plan is being adopted by the department. We present to you countywide level, and the department will have its own plan. But there's more work to be done, and this group of people will help to champion, attract, to monitor, and to be able to collaborate, build relationship within the division and across the organization. And we will determine, once we are able to come together, how we will accomplish this work, and we look at our timeline as well. Next slide. We started training our senior managers how to use the Racial Equity Tool. The Racial Equity Tool provides instruction and practice on how to use the tool within policies, program, budget decisions. That particular training is also, has also been postponed. We will adjust and figure out when we can get started again. And let me stress here, it is giving our leaderships a tool to be thinking about how they make decisions based on racial equity lens. So this is part of sustaining the work. Next slide. For FY21, these are some of the highlights. Again, the highlight in blue are the ones that align with the corporate business plan. So for example, the Ensure All Hiring Panel, participants complete in the interviewing skills, including an implicit bias self-assessment. So this is important, even though, you know, we would, could say that everyone is not biased as doing a hiring, participating in a hiring panel. At the same time, we want to ensure that, we want to ensure that they have the skills as a part of the panel. So that work will, has not started, and will begin this in FY21. It worked with the departments to develop programs that allow cross-training opportunities within and across the department. This is where an opportunity for employees to learn about how can I advance in the organization. Racial Equity Tool, using the Racial Equity Tool to review HR policies, procedures regarding recruitment, compensation, and update it as needed. This is part of ongoing work that HR will be doing with its policies and procedure. Collect demographic representation based on our existing boards, identify gaps, and develop approach to address these gaps. That is part of the clerk's office's work, and in partnership with my office, trying to figure out where do we put some emphasis on that. It will be more work to be done in FY21. Assess the current community engagement efforts and develop countywide inclusive engagement and public engagement framework. This is the work, I think, is the key in terms of how we engage the community. And that work, it's, the accountability belongs to the public information in my office, and that work hoping to start in FY21. Next slide. For FY22, here's some highlights. On these blue items, I will talk about as they align with our strategic business plan again. Study the feasibility of establishing employee resource groups. Identify and create and connect with departments to determine and create a, the Community to County Mentorship Program. This align with HR's internal mentorship program, but this is focusing on, on connecting with the community, universities, and colleges. And the last point, bullet point here, it's about developing an enterprise-wide language access plan to ensure equitable access to county services and programs and activity for activities for those residents with limited English proficiency. That work will start in FY22. We may need to look at, at this particular item to see if it's something that we could do sooner. Next slide, please. The ongoing, in the plan, you would also notice there are some ongoing items, items that are annual, and some of it is just the things that, the items that need to be, work that needs to go on, on a continual basis. Couple of things here. One is that we will provide ongoing learning opportunity to help employees operationalize equity. We will conduct a bi-annual employee equity survey. It is hoping to launch that in, in FY21. We conducted the first one in 2018. Convening partnership summits and community training to advance racial equity. As I said at the beginning, that we have to build partnerships and helping the community and our partners understand the importance of collectively doing this work. So we want to do that work more, and we need to take a look at how can we move that along, given the capacity at all levels of organization? How can we make that a reality? And hoping to be able to do that in the next fiscal year. The other item is looking at review and provide feedback on opportunities for improved standards and processes for data collection and reporting of our MWSBE procurement data. I know that finance has been working really hard with the Office of Economic Development to start collecting, better collection of our data and our reporting mechanism. Next slide, please. As it relate to, in terms of how do we know we're making an impact? We call it community indicators in the plan. And this is what we hope to see in the community. These are the community conditions that we are aiming to impact. We may not have 100% influence as it takes the entire system to advance equity. To make an impact on the community condition, we have to partner with other jurisdictions in the community. But we also know that we need to really identify what is it that we're trying to do for the community. So in that, I will highlight, first of all, in the, in the Equity Action Plan, in each of the goal, it identifies the community impact, their additional in, community indicators in the plan, and I just want to draw a couple of them even here today. The first one about percentage of population who believes, who believe Mecklenburg County is committed, committed to advance racial equity. We conducted in FY19 community survey, in that survey, and have a baseline of 65% of our community indicated that they believe that Mecklenburg County is committed to advance racial equity. The other item is that the median income of the community of the Hispanic Latinos and blacks are comparable to Asians and white. That is the data that we're tracking. Obviously, we don't, we're not the only organization that can contribute to that, but we wanted the contributing factors to that work. The other item I want to point out is the last one on your right, which is the reduction in overall representation within the criminal justice. The data, as back in March of 2019, indicated that we have 67.1% of the people in jail that are black versus 32.8 of our population. That is pretty significant. That is why we have that goal of racial equity in our criminal justice. Next slide. Performance measures are, our organizational performance measures, how we hold ourselves accountable. This is where we have the ability to influence and contribute to the results. This is how we monitor our successes of implementation and answering these key questions. How much did we do? How well did we do it? And is anyone better off? So this is what we're focusing on internally in terms of our measures. And I will speak on a few of these items. Number of departments with Equity Action Plan, which we'll be tracking that. Percentage increase in people of color in higher salary bands. You see that, the salary band for D salary band and an E salary band, and the percentage there with people of color. So there's opportunity for, for work to be done and how we will see if we're making progress in that work. The other one on your right, there are a couple items here. I'll highlight a few of those. Percentage of employees believe Mecklenburg County is a model employer advancing racial equity. We don't have the benchmark data yet. We will be doing that, adding that question to our survey in the fall, and hoping that we will get a baseline and be able to see if the work that we're doing internally, how our employees view how we're doing in terms of advance racial equity. The other point here is the, and tracking our demographics of county advisory board, ensuring they're reflective of the community. Next slide. What have we been doing in the virtual space over the last couple of months? And I want to highlight these items, because some of them, you have been involved as well. So with COVID-19, we worked, partnered with the City of Charlotte to assist with translation, producing videos, videos in multiple languages, and we were able to help in, in a few of those items. We developed a COVID-19 Equity Rapid Response Tool and Questions to Answer for our leadership, to help them to apply in terms of helping them to make decisions in responding to COVID-19. That toolkit, it's a very detailed in terms of the questions that you need to ask. For example, what are the racial and economic equity impacts of this decision? Will this effort help rebuild toward a just, equitable, and sustainable future? So the questions like that, that our leadership are using to help them guide, make decisions on, on policy decisions. We are also proposing in the relief fund, this particular program or, or where we want to invest in the funding. That is Cultural Linguistic Plan and Engagement for Immigrant and Refugee Community. And the county manager will be presenting this included in, in the entire relief fund effort at the next board meeting, I believe. We conducted two town halls addressing the impacts of communities of color with COVID-19 and with our partners, the City of Charlotte CBI and Northern Media. And that went really well, and we realized that people want to be engaged in the process, especially when you see the disparity, health disparities in every indicators of success. For employees, we continue to engage them virtually, and we started shifting our work to continue giving them, to increase their skills and learning by providing them with webinar series. The series will launch tomorrow, actually, and there are six topics that we will be presenting to our employees. And each series can hold up to 200 folks, and all of the, I would, glad to share with you that all of our sessions are full. And also wanted to recognize that our employees want to be engaged in this work, especially in light of what's happening with the civil unrest, with the protests, and recognizing the systemic racism that are happening with our organization and our community. And with the protests and civil unrest, as you all know this, we provided a joint statement with our partners, with the City of Charlotte Race Matters, Matters for Juvenile Justice and Community Building Initiative that was released last Thursday. In conjunction with our partners, we're planning to develop some sort of community dialogue and creating opportunities for the community to be engaged. At the same time, we realized that our employees want to be engaged and have a dialogue about what's happening in, in the community. And they want to find a platform to do that, and we're offering to host conversations for our employees, a virtual conversation with our employees about their perspective and what's happening. So those are the things that we're doing currently in the virtual space. So the next slide. How could the board lead for racial equity? And you always, you know, ask this. And, and I would start by saying, I am proud to say that you do such a great job at asking these questions. You're one of the few that I've seen across the country that really are in tune with what's happening with equity and inequities. And you ask such right questions that every time when I listen to your, to the presentation or to the presentation. And you ask such right questions at every time when I listen to your, to the presentation or to the board meetings. So I would say this continues to pose these questions. What are the racial equity impacts? And you ask it in multiple ways. You ask about demographics, keep asking the demographic data. And that's how we know we're making an impact. Asking staff to give you data about the racial makeup of what we're seeing. And you do a good job at the next bullet point, that is who's benefiting, who's being burdened? And I hear that quite a bit, comment from you, who's being burdened by this, who's benefiting? And then not only that, asking the root, what are the root causes of inequity? And are there any unintended consequences? We're going to implement this policy. Have we thought about unintended consequences? And how do we mitigate those unintended consequences? And then the next item is continue to hold yourselves accountable. We're holding ourselves accountable. I'm sure the county manager will hold all of us accountable. And we all have to be accountable for what we are set to do in our equity action plan. And support, the last item here says, continue to support the initiative that impact outcomes for all people. Last, next slide. And I will close by saying that we must continue to do our part to ensure every person can flourish and thrive. The Office of Equity Inclusion is even more important today. At the same time, it is as equally as important that all staff at every single level take ownership of advancing racial equity. At this time, I will, this is in my presentation. I would ask to bring up one of my employees who has joined me since February, January to help answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much for the time and I look forward to hearing your comments and questions.
Okay, so before we do questions, let me remind you of the time. It's 4:15, means we have 45 minutes left. We also have another presentation after the question period, which is the COVID-19 update. Hopefully that should be relatively brief. I'm going to give you four minutes and a minute follow-up. But I would ask that you be respectful of the fact that we have another presentation. We'll start with Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Scarborough. Okay, Commissioner Coffin.
Oh, thank you. This was an outstanding presentation and certainly thoughtful, certainly something that I'm going to read over and over again. I just thank you for it. I don't have any questions at this time. So I'll yield to my colleagues who might have some additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say that I really appreciate the joint statement that was published this week. I thought it was really excellent and I want to, I want to, Pen, I want to applaud you on participating with the, you know, the other organizations and that. I thought it was, I thought it was just right on message. And so I want to thank you for that. You know, the plan is obviously exceptional and I thought the presentation was really good. And I'm glad to see that you're taking steps to just go ahead and move in a virtual environment because I hate for this work to be delayed in any way because of COVID. I mean, COVID is impacting everybody. And so I certainly understand that it takes a while to figure out how to kind of move things forward in this new environment. But I'm pleased that you're, and you're making plans to, you know, do virtual trainings and that kind of thing. So I just, the comment I want to make is that I think the single greatest strategy to improve the delivery of social services is to eliminate racial inequity. And so, you know, the commitment to this, I think, is the single greatest thing we can do to better deliver social services in our community. And I'm appreciative of this board's commitment to having, that we are absolutely determined to make sure that race is not a determinant of outcomes in our community. And so I appreciate this board's commitment to that effort and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I want to add my thanks for this outstanding presentation. This kind of presentation makes me so proud. I think that what, what this county is focused on doing and is exactly what we need to be focused on. And I'm really proud of my colleagues for recognizing this in our budget last year and this year. I do, I do have people in the community who still say, what does racial disparity mean? And so it's so, it's so helpful to have this framework, the way you've presented it. And I'm really thankful for the work that you're doing. I think that also the fact that the employee participation is off the charts, that the sessions are all full, is a testament to the quality of the people that we have. And it shows what kind of hearts they have. And I'm just so thankful for that. I think that's outstanding. I think that, you know, the fact that my colleagues and I are recognizing that racism is a public health crisis is so key. And I'm just so thankful for serving with this group. I don't actually have any questions on the presentation, but I am really also excited about the community dialogue that's to come. And so I'm really going to be anxious to hear more about that and how that's going to move forward. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing that I want to say is I love the lady on the video who talked about an abundance mindset. And I know what she's talking about because it's always troubling to me when, when I hear somebody talk about winners and losers. And this is kind of deep, but I think like, I think like this. What good is this life? What good is, you know, what's it all about if we can't help each other succeed to be the best that we can be? And so I love that abundance mindset. I hope, I hope we talk about that more often. And I agree with what Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell was talking about. You know, when Michael Bryant gave us a presentation recently, he was talking about the community didn't understand, some of the people in the community didn't understand our priority, our number one priority. They didn't understand what reducing racial disparities meant. That's troubling that, so we have work to do. We have a lot of work to do. And thank you for this wonderful presentation. There are two things that I really think are important at this time and you have them under protest and civil unrest. I think however we can accelerate this, we need to do it. We need to have community dialogue, create more opportunities for community engagement. People need to be heard and we need to do it in places where they know that they are being heard. And how can we help our employees? And so you say, offer facilitated conversations for employees. I love that you have this here because I think there's a big need for it. I think that there are a lot of people that don't know what to say or good-hearted people who care and they want to make a difference, but they don't, they don't know how to do it. So I love that you have the facilitated conversations listed here. And it's very impressive. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Leake.
Let me say thank you. If we look at the streets and television every night, we see what the racial disparities have done for America. Whenever we sit down to talk, regardless to whether it's our board or any meeting we're in and you bring up the issue of race, you're the bad guy. You don't want to hear it, not you personally. But there's a problem in this country and there's a problem in Mecklenburg County as relates to race relation, even on our board, there are problems. So we need to talk about it and we know what those disparities happen to be. Health, education, housing, food, all of these are disparities that have come about because of America and this thought process about people who are black and of color. So we have a lot of work to do. Again, there is civil unrest in our community, in our country and in this world. So how do we address that and not skirt around it and play with it? When we bring up issues that pertain to the neglect of our people, the natural neglect of people, other people sit around and get mad at you for bringing it up. So we've got to come together and make sure we do the right thing and think the right thing, rather than getting upset when somebody talks about race. And I always say, put the rat on the table, put the rat on the table.
Okay, Commissioner Jarrell.
Pen, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was fantastic and I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I'm just always so humbled and grateful that the commitment that's been made by this board and my colleagues around this issue. So keep up the great work and thank you again. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and just to wrap this up, I want to say that work like this happens when you have good leadership. And so I want to thank our county manager for her commitment to seeing that the will of this board is put forward throughout her staff. You know, it was really interesting, and I'll be the first to say, I had no clue what our conversations would yield when we had this conversation back in January two years ago. But to see what is happening throughout our staff and people's commitment to ensuring racial equity is really astonishing. And I couldn't be more proud. I tell you, we are the envy of a lot of people because there are a lot of communities that have tried to do the things that we're trying to do, but have just not been successful. And so I'm excited to be a part of this board. I'm excited to be a part of Mecklenburg County and the work that we do. I just hope that we can figure out how we can expand this throughout the entire Mecklenburg County community. I think Commissioner Leake is right. Years ago, we used to have this breakfast with Diane English. And I can't remember what it was called, but the only people that would ever show up were African-Americans. And they got tired of showing up because it's like we're talking to ourselves and the people that we wanted to share our concerns with never showed up. And so while Mecklenburg County staff is a small place to start, my hope is that we will be able to expand this throughout our entire community. So thank you, Pen, for your tireless efforts and for your work in bringing about the change that we want to see. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So at this time, let's move on to our final presentation. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gibby Harris is with us this afternoon and she will give you a brief update on COVID-19. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Manager. I have a brief update for you this afternoon on our COVID-19 situation in Mecklenburg County. As of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, we had a total of 5,606 cases of confirmed COVID-19 in Mecklenburg County. We have 115 deaths at this point. We have 20 migrant living sites in outbreak status. So that number has gone up, unfortunately. I do want to point out that we continue to see higher numbers in our Hispanic community than in the other populations in Mecklenburg County at this point. And more than half of our cases have met the CDC criteria to be released from isolation. So that is good news. During the past week, though, we've averaged about 98 individuals with laboratory confirmed COVID-19 infections who were hospitalized for acute care. That is an increase over the last 14 days. During the past week, an average of 9.7% of individuals has tested positive. That's an increase over the last 14 days. And unfortunately, we have seen a steady decrease in social distancing in Mecklenburg County. So if you had a chance to review the report that came out this morning, we have met our 30-day testing goal of 5% of our community, which is good news. But the thing about COVID that has been consistent is that it's constantly changing. And so the guidance from the federal government, as well as the state, has changed around testing. There was a call from the White House to the state late last week from the task force that's working on COVID-19. They are working with a number of states who are seeing increased numbers and increased hospitalizations. And unfortunately, North Carolina falls into that category. They are working with these states to come up with solutions and the biggest one seems to be an increase in testing requirements. They also identified a number of counties in each of these states that they feel need the most focus. And obviously, Mecklenburg is one of those counties in North Carolina. There are seven others at this point. The request that has come to us from the state is that we increase our testing by 10 fold. That is quite an increase. Currently, we're testing about 2,000 people a day. So we are in the process of working with the state, as well as our local partners who are doing testing, to have conversations about what this means, what it looks like, understanding fully the need for resources to be able to meet this kind of increase, both from the testing standpoint, so what kind of staffing, what kind of PPE, what kind of reagent, what kind of laboratory support we need. And from the other side of the coin, when the testing is done, what we need to be able to do, all of the isolation and quarantine contact tracing that needs to take place. And then last, but obviously not least, having the resources we need to communicate with our community so that they understand the need for testing and that they're accessing testing. Obviously, we can put 2,000 tests out there, but that does not mean, I mean, 20,000 tests out there, that does not mean 20,000 people are going to come in every day for testing unless they understand the need for it and when it's appropriate for them. But the other side of that is also our isolation and quarantine efforts. As we move through this pandemic, what we are beginning to find is that people are tiring of it. I think that was clear when we started opening things up and people started coming back out. Unfortunately, our staff are having individuals who are not answering their telephones when we try to contact them. And some are hanging up on us when we do contact them. So we're going to need to continue to educate the community about why it is important for them to comply with isolation and quarantine if we're to get things back in the direction that we want to get them in. So a lot of effort is going on right now. We're exploring all our options. The state has promised resources to help us with this. And we're trying to put some definition around the resource needs and find out what they can help us with. They're also working with private entities who have the ability to come into the county to help us with testing as well. And so we'll keep you informed as we move forward. There is a heat map of the testing options in Mecklenburg County. And it looks like we pretty much have the county covered within, everybody having access within five miles of a testing site. But that still does not mean that it's as, well, people can't access it as well as they may need to. So we'll continue to work on location as well as having additional sites in the community. So that is my report and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, before we get started with questioning, I remind you, this is our last presentation, but we also have a comment period for each commissioner. Three minutes is being reserved. Three minutes is being reserved. That's going to take about 30 minutes and now it's about 4:30. So if you want to ask ongoing questions about COVID, feel free or we can share the remainder of the time with the Prime Minister. So any questions about the COVID update? We'll start with Commissioner Scarborough. I think she's not there.
Commissioner Cawtham?
Oh, thank you. Just a quick questions. And I appreciate giving the presentation and that you're going to work to have more testing locations. But my question is, for those who are asymptomatic, who also attended the protest, will they be, and the governor has been talking about if you were in the protest to get tested, will they be able to get tested if they're asymptomatic but were in the protest?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Cawtham. That was one of the things I meant to mention and failed to. We received guidance in writing this morning from the state that we should be making testing available to anyone who attended any of the protests. And so we've had conversations with our hospitals and with the other venues in the county that we are aware of that are doing testing so that they can start making that available to individuals. So yes, that will be available in Mecklenburg County.
All right, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Harden.
Hi, Gibby. So talk to me about what we need to do to, actions we need to take to make sure that people are taking the phone calls of tracers. So I mean, I know that we haven't had press availability in a while. I mean, tell me, tell me what we need to do to get the messaging out there that, you know, to the tracers is important.
That's a good question as well. I think there's going to be a major need for messaging around both the testing as well as the contact tracing piece. It doesn't do us a whole lot of good to do testing if people are not going to comply with isolation and quarantine. That's the main purpose for doing it, is to keep people away from others if they've been infected or if they've been exposed. So I think as we roll out additional testing, we've really got to hit that messaging pretty hard and we've got to work with our media to get us to help us do that. But we also need to be working with our churches, our community-based organizations and other leaders in the community to help us get that message out. So we will-
I would say that your Commissioners stand ready to help you in that effort. So I mean, just if you tell us what we need to do, we have pretty, you know, we have pretty big pipelines. And so if there's, if there's things we can do to help, if you just tell us what we can do to be, we want to be helpful and not hurtful. And so tell us what we need to do and we'll do it.
You will be hearing from us shortly. Thank you.
Great. And then just one last question. Gibby, you know, as we start to see, you know, our numbers go up, is there any more consideration about requiring masks?
That has still not been discussed as a direction that anybody really wants to go in right now. You know, the challenge with masking, there's a number of challenges. And just recently, the WHO just released information that they're not really sure that people who are asymptomatic really play a big part in exposing others to this virus. So again, the messaging is just not clear and the guidance isn't either. We continue to recommend it but not require.
And I guess my last question is, talk to me about what's happening in our nursing homes. Extremely concerned about that number. I imagine as we continue to increase testing, we're just going to see that increase. You know, is there anything we need, any more we need to do with our nursing homes and long-term care facilities? Super concerned about that.
So we're in the process of ramping up our testing with our long-term care facilities, those that are in outbreak status. We're working to get them tested weekly and for staff to be tested weekly regardless of whether they're in outbreak status or not. As we expand our testing, that will be an easier lift for us. So we hope that helps.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Gibby. I was wondering, I want to make sure that the clear message is out. So as far as access to testing, you don't have to have symptoms. Is that right?
We are, if you have had, at this point in time, based on the capacity that we have in the county, I will say that if you have had exposure to someone with COVID, don't have symptoms. Or if you have been involved in one of the protests and around people without masks, yes, we're saying that you should test without symptoms. We're not opening it county-wide at this point because we just haven't built that capacity out. That will happen over the next week hopefully. Then we can expand further.
So you're saying within a week, anybody can go and get a test, symptoms or no symptoms?
I'm saying that I hope that we'll have that done in a week. We are working on that plan right now. A lot depends on how quickly the state will be able to provide us with the resources that they promised.
Okay, okay.
Just to say, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, when Gibby and I talked to Dr. Cohen yesterday, she actually said it would not happen in a week. So I want to manage expectations about how quickly they're going to be able to get us the resources. So we're going to continue to push, but it will be, it'll be a heavy lift for them to get the resources here for us to be able to go from 2,000 tests a day to 12,000 tests a day.
Thank you for that. Now, the cost is free?
At this point, yes. And I'm assuming it will be moving forward. But that is, we'll have to clarify that.
Okay, because I really want to know if that's at all locations? You know, whether it's a mobile testing site or what, you know, all testing is free?
So what I can say for sure at this point is that our hospital systems will test. They'll bill if billing is available. Otherwise, it's free. And that our CVS pharmacy sites are free. They will bill insurances that's available. There are other sites that are testing in the community, small clinics, other entities. I cannot say for sure. I think a number of those are charging.
Okay. I think that's kind of confusing for folks. They're not sure what to expect. And also, I want to know, what are the timeframe, what is the timeframe for getting results of your test? Is it a day, two days, same day? Like what's the average timeframe?
There is a little bit of rapid testing available. However, rapid testing does not necessarily have the same rate of clarity around the test results as the other testing does. Other testing will take 24 to 72 hours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all my questions for now.
Okay, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So I heard you say there's some confusion about whether or not to recommend masks. And we keep, we keep asking this question. So I think it would be helpful to us, like to get a formal response from the emergency management team on why we aren't requiring masks. Because I've heard from enough people, like senior citizens, people who are just, they're scared to even go to the grocery store when it's open for seniors because not everyone is wearing masks. And I heard the World Health Organization interview yesterday, but now today, they're singing a different tune. And so it's very confusing to people. And the reason I think it's so important that we formally address this is because it looks like we're having increased hospitalizations. And people don't want to go back into Phase One. Like they, if we can prevent going backward, we need to be as proactive as possible. And I, you know, I just don't, requiring masks with some exemptions for people who, there are some people who cannot wear them, but-
Let me just make a couple of comments here. One is that the county cannot unilaterally require it county-wide. So we'd have to go back to the city and the six towns and have a conversation about whether or not they would agree because it wouldn't make sense if you wear a mask in the city of Charlotte, but you could go to Davidson and you wouldn't have to wear one. So that's confusing. So we would have to get consensus amongst all the entities if they really wanted to do that. That's the first thing. The second thing is when we did have conversations around this, we got a lot of pushback from law enforcement because they can't enforce it. And they were pretty adamant about the fact that they did not support us requiring masks. So we would have to go back and have another conversation with law enforcement who are pretty stressed right now with everything else that's going on and see whether or not they're willing to put this on their list of things to do in terms of enforcing people wearing face coverings when they leave their house. So that was one of the big reasons why we didn't try to move forward with it before was because it's really basically unenforceable.
And I really appreciate that and all of the factors that go into it. It's just, it would be helpful for the public to understand all of everything that goes into that decision-making because they look to their leaders in crisis and they're looking to us and wondering why we aren't requiring more. And so I think just a formal response would help the public. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Leake.
Thank you. Let me say thank you. My concern is the numbers are going up and they're not decreasing. And we are seeing, as has been stated, people without the mask. And the six towns cannot dictate to the county. And I hear what you're saying, my manager, I hear what you're saying, that they cannot dictate to us and say, we cannot recommend strongly that you wear the mask. And that's important to many of us in our communities. The other piece is getting the information out. We don't see nor hear other than your reports of you and Mrs. Gibby about the issue of the virus. And I want to know, what was this email between Dina and Mr. Fuller? What was that about? Dina, what was that concern about?
That email that I sent yesterday was basically a summary of what Gibby reported to you today, which is the conversation that we had with Dr. Mandy Cohen about our needing to do significantly more testing in Mecklenburg County, basically increasing testing tenfold in order to be able to try to contain the virus more effectively. And that's not just in Mecklenburg County, that is in other counties within the state as well. Mr. Fuller was, I guess, well, he can speak for himself, he's not here.
Right.
He didn't understand why we didn't have the expertise in the county to do that. It's not a matter of having expertise, it's about having capacity and resources. An email this morning from Dr. Gene Woods of Atrium Health, who said he's going to be sending his request for what his needs are for Atrium to the state in order to be able to get the resources that we need. The bottom line is that we don't have the resources or the capacity today to go from 2,000 tests per day to go to 20,000 tests per day.
We cannot request from the state? We have to wait for Atrium to do it?
We have, no, Atrium's going to do it, Novant's going to do it. Other providers in the community are going to do it, like CW Williams. Dr. Cohen indicated bringing other resources to the county, like mobile testing sites, which indicated to us was that the state was going to lead this testing surge and making sure we have the capacity. And our expectation was that local health departments were going to be responsible for case investigation and contact tracing. But that was going to be the lead in making sure that we have the resources in our county to be able to meet that threshold.
So how does this stand with the convention that's in August? Where are we with that?
I do not have any new information about the RNC.
Well, I thought the president said if he didn't know by that the other day, by 12 o'clock, he was withdrawing the invitation.
I don't, I don't have any new information about where the RNC-
Thank you so much for your time and your work.
All right, Commissioner Jarrell.
Gibby, just a quick question. I want to go back to, you were talking about the education efforts. One of the things that, as we see the numbers increase, I'm noticing, I know we were supposed to be using our social influencers and different things of that nature. Can you give us a sense of how that's going?
Tell, I mean, there's, there are some things that can be tracked, that public information is tracking for us, and then there are other things that they can't track to see how well the messaging. But we've been hearing from the community that they are seeing the messages and that they're getting the messages. So I think we just need to continue to increase that as much as we can as well as maybe modifying our messages around testing and contact tracing.
And I don't know if we're currently doing this, but one of the things that, I'm just going to go ahead and suggest that from a standpoint, I think people have raised this point already that, and actually, your data shows that social distancing is certainly declining. When I'm, I'm definitely not seeing people masked up, which, you know, I'm really concerned about as we, as, you know, I've been down with the protesters and, and so not really in compliance. It really seems like the messaging that we had initially around washing our hands and reinforcement of the message of social distancing, washing our hands, wearing masks, it seems to be really declining and I am recommending that, and you touched on it a little bit, but an all-out media blitz that I hope would include, you know, local TV ads, PSAs. And when we're also looking at social media, I think those influencers are great, but there's some other things that we can do relative to Facebook ads that we can get a ton of impressions for, it's just dirt cheap. And on all our social media sites as well. So I'm hoping, when we talk about education, I really hope that we're looking at a comprehensive all-out blitz campaign utilizing, you know, the people on this call, the county manager and everyone to put a face to it and get that message out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Gibby, one question about the tracers. When they make phone calls, do the numbers where the call comes from register as Mecklenburg County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is a system in place now from the state where folks may get an email or a text message from the state asking them to contact their local health department. But everything that comes from here comes from a county line, a county telephone number. So we are, we are being very careful to make sure that we're, you know, we're working around some of that state system and some of those messages that are going out. What we're finding is people really don't want to hear us say, you need to stay home for 14 days. One of the things that seems to be helping some is we have been doing some work through some of our social workers to discover what people's needs might be if they have to stay home for a period of time and helping them access services. And as we look at increased numbers, we're having to increase that availability as well because that does seem to help people comply a little bit better. But we have to get them on the phone first.
All right. And so that we can be clear, everybody keeps talking about being clear about what we want to say. So we can be clear. While Mecklenburg County Commissioners cannot require people to wear masks, we are asking you to do several things, community. We're asking you to wear masks. We're asking you to wash your hands continuously. We're asking you to social distance. Lastly, if you have been participating in the protest, we're asking you to go to one of the testing sites and make sure that you get tested to decrease the spread of the virus. That's our request. We can't mandate it, but we are all concerned about what's happening in our community. And right now, we're trending in the wrong direction. And so we're specifically, and we're board of county commissioners, making this request of you. Lastly, let me just share with you, you can end my time, Emily, but this is just an update for the board. We were asked to come up with a structure for the task force for the COVID recovery. We met this- We met this morning, and we have decided that we will comprise a committee of 23 persons. We decided that those persons can be either nominated or be self-nominated. As soon as Emily is able to get the information up online and start disseminating the information about the process in about close to two weeks, the board will come together and review all of the names of everybody who has either been nominated or submitted. And then we will go through our normal process of making recommendations for people to serve on that task force. We will elect 23 persons to serve on the task force, and from that group, we will select a chair and vice chair. Madam Clerk, Madam Manager, did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
All right. Thank you.
They will be, it'll be open for applications tomorrow, and I will send an email out to the board once that's up.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that being said, if there are final comments, according to our rules, you have three minutes, but only if you need. Let's go with Commissioner Cawtham?
No final comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Harden?
My final comment is that I know that, Gibby, I hear that people are getting tired of this, but I think the most important thing we can do is just tell people the truth about what is happening with the COVID virus right now. I mean, we're seeing, we're, we're, you know, it, the conditions are at the highest they've ever been. And this was, these were the circumstances that caused us to go into Phase One. And so I just, I'm concerned that, that, you know, we need to tell people the truth, whether they want to hear it or not. And the truth is exactly what the chairman said, that, you know, that, that we need people to wear masks, that we, that we, they need to wash their hands, that they're, and I understand that people are fatigued about it, but there's, there's, you know, that there's people in this community, Commissioner Powell stated precisely, that are literally afraid to go out because of the, the rise of the COVID in our community right now. And so I just think, I think we have to be there for those people because we are the most vulnerable. So thank you.
All right. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, reiterate how concerned I am about the Hispanic community. As we look at the numbers, 37% of our positive cases are, are in the Hispanic category. And so I just, I just want to implore us to think about ways to reach out to that community more if we can. And one of the ways I'm hoping, one of the ways that I'm asking for in our COVID relief funds is to have real-time translations of our press conferences. I, I just, I don't know how else. I'm looking for other ways to help that community get the message. So thank you for allowing me to make my comments. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
No further comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Leake?
Let me say that we not have a meeting again when there's a major funeral taking place, as it did today with George Floyd, with the situation that has been across this world. That was, that's just a recommendation. And I agree about the numbers. We have 5,606. Am I right? Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have 115 deaths. Are those deaths within the confines of Mecklenburg County?
Yes, those are all, both the cases and the deaths are Mecklenburg County residents.
That's a high number. That's extremely high. So we have to do something else to make sure that our people get the message, all of our people. Please do, because to know that we've lost 115 people to death in this community, and here we have 5,606, is a high number for this community to suffer. And this is bearing heavily on the community. Now, we talk about going to the black churches, we need to go to all churches, all communities, and give that message to our people because we want to save lives. We don't want to lose people. And this certainly greets me to know that we have 115 deaths and 5,606 people with the virus. That doesn't speak well for any of us as commissioners working hard to get the information to the public. Let's pray for our community and work hard to get the information to save the lives of our people. These are our people. These are people who vote for us. These are people who care about us and care about this community. Thank you for the time.
All right. Commissioner Jarrell?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And my final comments again is please, if you've been protesting, go get COVID testing. Wear your mask, wash your hands, and social distance. This concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Scarborough. Is there a second?
Leake, the second.
Moved by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Leake. Roll call vote, Commissioner Scarborough, how do you vote?
Let's do it.
Commissioner Cawtham?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Leake?
A change is going to come.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. Meeting stands adjourned. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, results?
That was unanimous to adjourn.
Thank you. Meeting stands adjourned.
All right.